Do you ever feel something's wrong? It's like the wind is stopping. If you were here, it would be a dream. I'm not gonna lie, I'm feeling bad. I'm just trying to make it through. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. I'm gonna let you go. Even when I'm scared, I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. Do you ever feel something's wrong? It's like the wind is stopping. If you were here, it would be a dream. I'm not gonna lie, I'm feeling bad. I'm just trying to make it through. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. It's a shame that I'm scared. I'm gonna let you go. Then they can just go on. 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 Oh man. What we do. Woo! 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 Hi, my name is Jamil Samayos and I have the honour of being the president of Framingham State University. I'd like to acknowledge a few special people that are here this afternoon. Representatives Walsh, Gentile, Louis and Mary. Thank you guys. Princess Susan Catherine Clark wishes she could be here with us where she is obviously in Washington DC in an important call that was happening this afternoon. I'd like to thank the moderator for this event, one of our wonderful students, the president of the Student Government Association, Ezekiel Zeke De Leon. My name is Ezekiel De Leon, president of the Student Government Association. And on behalf of the student body, I want to welcome all of you. It's a very special occasion that we are in right now. Framingham State has a very fond of Framingham State, has a special place in my heart. And I think all the time that here we are on a four-year journey of learning, not only of content, but our personal lives. And today is a day where we conceive where those two worlds, where the learning and the social activism are together. So thank you so much for being here. And at this time, we'll have Senator Warren.
So, before I say anything else, I want to start out with a huge thank you. Today in Washington, we held off an attack on healthcare for all of America. And it happened because of you and people like you all across the country. Okay, when we get in a fight, we can win. And that's what I want to say. I want to get into this in just a sec. I want to talk a little bit and then I just want to get straight to as many questions as you've got. I want to hear it from Framingham State. And some of you in this audience will remember that Framingham State is where I had my first volunteer event when I was a teenager. And at that event, and we did this right, at that event, I took a picture and posted it. Everybody wave. Okay, so you're all gonna be. But it really is fabulous to be back here and fabulous to have a chance to talk to all of you. Yeah, thanks for all of you. Amanda's little face. Okay. First of all, I just want to make sure you can hear me in the back. You know, I tell the school teacher, right? I want to make sure you can hear me in the back, I will be keeping an eye on you. I know blind who are in the back. You will be called on before this is over. Okay. I just want to talk very quickly about three things that are going on in Washington and then we'll talk about whatever you want to talk about. But the first one obviously is what's happening with the Affordable Care Act. And while on one hand, I want to say thank you, the other half is do not let down your guard. They're still coming. And they can do this on Saturday, they can do it on Sunday, they can do it in the middle of the night. They're coming after America's healthcare. The Republicans just are hell-bent on trying to take away health insurance from 24 million people, drive up the cost of health insurance for millions more middle-class, hard-working families. And what do they accomplish with all of that? A tax break for millionaires and billionaires. Now, that's not about healthcare reform. That's about doing the one thing the Republicans have been working on for years now. And that is make this country work better and better for those who are rich and powerful and kick dirt in everybody else's face. And that's why we're here today. Yeah! Woo! Woo! The second thing I want to mention is that this week we have also been talking about Supreme Court nominee Neil Gorsuch.
Surprise!
Yeah, it's surprise, surprise. I'll talk more about this if anyone wants to ask any questions. But look, bottom line is there is a reason that there is a 60-vote threshold for a Supreme Court nominee. And the reason for that is because this is somebody who once they get in there, it's lifetime. And there's no one who has any ability to review what they do. Not the president, not the congress, not some other set of judges. And so it is powerfully important that whoever makes it to one of these seats in the Supreme Court be somebody who can attract enough bipartisan support that there's somewhere in the mainstream of legal law. In my view, Neil Gorsuch is a man who has made it clear by his written record, by his decisions, over and over and over again, that when he has a choice between the rights of corporations and the rights of women, he chooses corporations. The rights of corporations and the rights of employees, he chooses corporations. The rights of corporations and the rights of consumers, he chooses corporations. We need a Supreme Court justice who chooses real people. Woo! 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 And if Donald Trump has nominated somebody who can't get 60 votes, then he needs a new nominee. Period. And one I just want to mention, because I think it's so powerfully important, is that the budget that Donald Trump has laid out, which is really his blueprint and Republicans' blueprint for where this country goes. And what's he said in this blueprint? How do we build a future in America? According to Donald Trump and the Republicans, the way to do it is to cut our investment in medical research by 20%. Right? It is. Woo! Woo! I'm with you. I'm with you. To cut health grants, right? To zero out meals on wheels. To make our country, I want to be clear about this. He says he wants to increase the defense budget, but what he wants to do is make huge cuts elsewhere in the budget, which is part of how we keep ourselves safe. Through the state, it's through the State Department, through our counter-terrorism work. You know, a budget, a lot of people think of it as just a bunch of numbers. No, a budget is about our values. And the point we've got to make and make strongly is that we want a budget that aligns with our values. That means investing in our health. That's what I'm saying. So, we're going to do some questions, okay? This is going to be stump the senator. We're going to do some questions. Come on out, Zeke, and make this happen. All right. Do you want to explain to them how this is going to work?
Yes. Some rules have to follow.
Whoa, it's not here, okay. Speak up, Zeke, so they can hear you.
So, for those of you who were able to register to ask questions, you receive the number. At this time, I'm going to call three numbers, at which point you'll be able to go to either the aisles. We have Rachel on your right side.
Let's hear it for Rachel.
And Jess on your left.
Jess.
When you hear your number, please approach the person who has one to you, and that you please refrain to only ask one question, so he can get there as many as possible.
Okay. All right, Zeke, come at it. This is when the music plays.
So, we'll be calling numbers 107, 95, and 94.
I think the 90s are always tougher than the older. Have we got someone? Here comes somebody. Anybody else? Good to see you.
Hello, Senator.
Hello.
As me and many Americans fail, our health care bill has failed. Do you think this marks the end of the Trump presidency?
Your mouth to God's ears. No, I don't. And I'll tell you why. Because they'll keep coming back. I mean, look, they've got so much invested. They're going to come back again and again and again. And it's not on healthcare, they're coming back on Neil Gorsuch, right? They're coming back on this budget. They're coming back on one after another, after another. And that's why it is, that's why this is such a moment to pay attention to. It shows how important engagement is. And that the only way we're going to be able to fight back against the agenda that Trump and the Washington Republicans are pushing is that we've got to stay engaged, we've got to stay active, we've got to show up, we've got to talk to people, we've got to call people, we've got to be in this fight all the way.
Hi, Senator Warren. Thank you for coming here to talk tonight.
Yeah, I'm glad to be here. What's your name?
My name's Kevin.
Hi, Kevin.
I wanted to ask about healthcare again, but I wanted to ask about what the Democrats are going to fight for for healthcare. The Affordable Care Act was a good bill, I think it did a lot, but it was from a Republican government, from Massachusetts. And it was created by the Heritage Foundation. Do you think that Democrats should try and fight for more progressive healthcare, like a public option or even single payer?
Yes. And I'm going to just give Kevin one more answer and full cheat it here, right? It's not about Trump, but I actually want to make a little point around this. And that is, the Democrats did everything they could nationally to try to make it a bipartisan bill. And it is true. The Democrats took a Heritage Foundation idea, they took something that had been advanced by a Republican government here in Massachusetts, and had gotten off the ground, and had some testing for it, we'd seen how it works. We took a bazillion amendments and made changes. And how much Republican support did we get for that? Like, none? Right at the end of the day? So, my view on this is, when it's time to take a step back and to say, so what is the right way to do healthcare in America? I think that's when it's time to put it all on the table. Not just small adjustments to what we've got here, although I'm glad to do this, that's where we can go right now. But I think it's time to put it all on the table and to talk about the options that will actually deliver the best possible healthcare at the lowest possible price for all of America. One more? Somebody already cut out. Zeke, who are you? Do you want back? You can stay out here. Hey, listen, I stand next to her, and it doesn't work.
So, we'll do number 87. 107 and 5.
Five. This is somebody who is really committed to being here. Go ahead and get us started.
You can hold on to that? Thank you very much. Senator Warren, first, let me thank you for your passionate and intelligent representation in our great legislative process. I'm glad that Massachusetts is truly fortunate to have you as our senator. My question concerns this. What are the most effective actions that we as citizens can take to affect change? For example, does signing electronic petitions online that we do over and over again have any impact? Town hall meetings have seemed to be effective, especially with the Affordable Care Act. But as citizens of a predominantly Democratic state, what are the best things that we can do to influence political change on a nationwide scale regarding the current issues as well as the upcoming 2018 elections? If you want to help, please tell us how.
Oh, thank you. I look at this as what are their advantages, what are our advantages, as we get into the role of this fight. And their advantages are pretty clear. They've got, what, money bots, right? They've got concentrated power, concentrated money, they can run lots of ads, they're very disciplined, wake people up in the middle of the night and say, what does a Republican stand for? And they've got their two or three bumper stickers. That works for them. And they have really been able to leverage that into a win in the Senate, in the House, and in the White House. So, we've got to be on our side. What we got on our side? My view, we've got three things on our side. We've got our votes, we've got our voices, and we've got our values. Our values, progressive values, are America's values. When I say that, I really mean this, that's not just like so much noise. I really mean it. When you think about the things that we get out there and fight for, like access to affordable healthcare, like raising the minimum wage, like reducing the cost of student loans and making public universities available to people so they all get credit. More structure and in jobs right here in America, protecting and expanding Social Security for those who depend most on it. More regulation for Wall Street banks, not a... True progressive taxation, where rich pay a fair share. And here's my point, on every one...
Don't forget the environment.
What's it?
Don't forget the environment.
Don't forget the environment! To give them the chance, I want to say something really controversial when I talk about our values. We live in science. First, you can breathe the air and drink the water, right? And that we have, and this is why I put it in terms of values, that we have a moral responsibility to pass along a planet to our children and grandchildren where they will be able to breathe the air and drink the water. To say that, the reason I start the answer to your question there is these core values that shape what it means to me to be a Democrat are core values that are widely shared across this country. Everything that I've just described, somewhere between about 2 out of 3 and 3 out of 4 people across this country say, yeah, that is what we should be doing. And I don't mean just the Democrats. I mean Democrats, independents, Republicans, because people believe in an America where we invest in the future, where we do try and make things work, not just for a thin slice at the top, but we try to make it work for all of us. An America where our kids will have more opportunities than we had, not fewer. And I say that because what it really means is we can use our voices, we can use our votes, and we can really turn that into change in this country. So, you guys are here in Massachusetts. What can we do in Massachusetts? You asked me the question, does it matter to sign on to online petitions? You bet it does. Does it matter to make phone calls? You bet it does. If you think it doesn't, look at what just happened down in Washington. Having said that, we've got a great delegation here in Massachusetts, right? So, it means we have a special opportunity. And that's the opportunity to reach outside Massachusetts. Everybody in this room has family, friends, acquaintances, folks you went to school with, friends of friends who belong to organizations that have members in other states, members in districts that are represented by Republicans. Please, 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 reach out to them. Ask them to call. Your calls matter, but their calls really matter. Ask them to call and ask them to show up. Show up at town halls, show up at office hours, show up when it's not office hours, hold a sign, get out there and make their voices heard. Because it's all...